(inaudible).
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 We're third meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, redevelopment successor agency, and financing authority. We're going to begin tonight as we do each week with the pledge of allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council on staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by Assistant City Manager Amanda Berlin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding two items. First, the East Riverfront property in negotiations with California State Parks, and second, the Bridge District Riverfront property noted in the agenda, negotiations with Bridge District Riverfront LLC, and no action was taken on either item. That brings us to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the council is prohibited by state law from having a discussion or taking action on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public hearing. We do ask that anyone wishing to speak on any item tonight to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door, and to turn the card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use just to make sure that everybody gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which item is currently under consideration. We do recognize, we take the cards all the way to the end of the staff presentation on any particular agenda item, so if you're here, once the questions or the council discussion or public testimony begins, we don't take any additional speaker requests, so if you're here on a particular item, please be sure to get the card in. And then, we do ask that we try to maintain a civil discourse in the chambers for a lot of folks, especially sometimes it's their first time. It's a nerve-wracking experience to speak in public and on TV in front of the whole world, so we try to maintain a civil discourse here with no boos, cat calls, applause, or other demonstrations. So with that, we have no requests to speak under item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is council communications or their reports or their communications this evening. Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. October 1st, meeting of the city county, excuse me, city school two-by-two committee, we addressed the MOU agreement for the West SAC Home Run Initiative. The funding framework for the Home Run Initiative commits funding targets of up to $25,000 for the college savings accounts program, which essentially provides about $50 a seed deposit for each child who's completed a high-quality preschool in West Sacramento, and then subsequently enrolls in Washington Unified School District kindergarten. It's a city's interest in evaluating and measuring the outcomes of this investment, and so we had the item in the two-by-two to discuss data sharing agreement, which included suggestions by members of the committee to add and refine and/or expand data points used to evaluate the likelihood of eligible participants that eventually will hopefully enroll in higher education. We're continuing to work on that framework based on the discussion, and we provided feedback for our program manager, Ian Winbrot, who is optimistic that we can incorporate the suggestions, and will continue to market and promote the program to facilitate recruitment of eligible participants who can benefit from the program. Thank you.
Perfect. Is that all your reports?
Yep.
Does anybody have the port commission report by chance?
(inaudible).
Mr. Lauronsen's here, the CEO of the port commission. I see we don't have our port commission agendas up here any longer from a meeting that occurred earlier today, so could you summarize the actions at the port commission?
Definitely. The port commission took a couple of actions tonight, the first being authorizing or delegating authority to the city manager to accept property on behalf of the port. It was some cleanup that was needed. And then the second item was approval of some budget modifications and structural reorganization of how the port fits within the city organization.
And that item will be coming to the council as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. I had a couple of reports. First, the SACAG board did meet, I think I briefed the council at our last meeting, about the issues around the MTP and the sustainable community strategy, and some of the challenges around the land use balance and the transportation projects. One new development, we've run now the, that was shared with the board two weeks ago, we've run the emissions and climate change analysis on the current, on the discussion draft of the MTPSCS that we talked about at the last council meeting, and it comes in at a greenhouse gas reduction of 14%, which is solid, but we are mandated by the state, the California Resources Board, to achieve 19%. And so, and all of the easy, medium, and hard actions are in the 14 already, so we're back, we're not back to the drawing board, but continuing to refine. This is not a shock, we went through, we've gone through this the last, the last plan as well, but it is, that's not a small gap. And so, taking a look at both the, some of the specific projects, some of the specific land use allocations in conjunction with our staff is a part of the solution. Part of the solution is even more attention on the innovation side, you know, so we've asked staff to go back and look at things like, what if, what if a large portion of the region were to, were to mimic what West Sacramento was piloting in terms of West SAC on demand with VIA, those sorts of, those sorts of changes. And then, all of that, if we expect, might get us to 18, 17 or 18, although we don't know. And then the remaining percent or two, maybe three, will, probably the only element that's left is some form of carbon, carbon pricing, congestion pricing, road pricing, that's going to have to be on the table as well. The, that has already been forecast in the existing air pollution plan, in the regional, in the attainment process that Mr. Johansson plays a significant role in through the air district, but now it's, it looks likely that it's going to have to be considered in the transportation plan itself. The pricing mechanisms are just going to be key, whether that's on driving or parking or other things, on a region-wide basis in order to, to change the demand scenario on the climate change emissions. Because if we don't make that target, then we don't have a sustainable communities plan, and, you know, to get technical about it, that means that the best we can do is adopt an alternative planning scenario, which is legal from a federal perspective, but from the state's perspective, if you have, if you have an alternative planning scenario and not a sustainable communities strategy, then many of the benefits from SB 375 and some of the other laws no longer accrue to the city. And so, our competitiveness, for example, for all the cap and trade money that we have won into the future, as a region, but, but each individual place inside the region would be significantly diminished. We would not be eligible for the SEQA streamlining, and many of the SEQA streamlining provisions that were in SB 375, and then particularly for West Sacramento because we are, along with the city of Sacramento, we're the two cities that sit within, at least a portion of our cities sit within the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta. And as the council, I think the council is aware, the state law that created the Delta Stewardship Council gave the Delta Stewardship Council essentially residual authority to overturn any actions of the city that the Delta Stewardship Council felt might affect water supply, water conveyance, water quality, habitat, some of the other issues under the scope of the Delta Stewardship Council. That applies uniquely in the Delta, and in this city, that, that means everything from the railroad tracks south essentially is the Delta, so it's a, it's a huge part of our city. It's a small portion of the city of Sacramento. If you're, we are, that, that authority for the Stewardship Council to overturn the city's action, it does not apply when a project or a policy is consistent with a sustainable community strategy, which all of our policies and projects are consistent with that sustainable community strategy. But if SACAG's unable to meet the 19% target, then we will not have a sustainable community strategy. We'll have an alternative planning scenario, and therefore, we will be, we will be exposed to risk that this state agency, the Delta Stewardship Council, could, could review and overturn, you know, we don't, it's untested, but, you know, a wide range of authorities, general plans, and other things that we adopt here in the city. So, we are doing, we will do everything necessary in order to prevent that outcome, but it's, it's not just a mathematical exercise or a modeling exercise. It has very significant real-world consequences for the whole region, but particularly for, for our city. Then we also, SACAG's also, at the, at that meeting, approved a new youth leadership academy, and as our current chair, Jason Eer, from the city of Sacramento, has made youth development a significant priority at the SACAG board, happens to align very closely what we're doing here with the Home Run. But we're, with some philanthropic support and some business community support, we'll be, we'll be creating a youth leadership academy with two, two high school students from each of the member jurisdictions of SACAG will be selected to participate in intensive regional leadership program over the course of the year. So that would be one junior and one senior that will be selected from West Sacramento, the junior for a two-year term, and then the senior for a one-year term, and they'll, then they'll be rolling into the future. So, in the, in the coming weeks, we'll be putting out the, the solicitation and the applications and the marketing for, for young people in our community to, to apply and to participate in what should be a really great leadership program. I also, last week, participated in the Institute for the Futures annual convening about the, the future of trust and engage, and civic engagement, and the, this is an institute in Silicon, in Silicon Valley that is widely used by, it's a think tank, but also widely used by companies and governments around thinking about what, you know, how, how to prepare for, how to capture, how to win the future essentially. And the, the leadership role that our city has played in civic engagement, or at least in, in piloting and trying and experimenting with new forms of civic engagement, has attracted a fair amount of attention, and so they invited us to come and talk about, about what trust, what trust will look like, and what, how trust is affected by the changes in technology, both on the corporate side, and then for us in, at the government scale, at the nonpartisan government scale. The U.S. Conference of Mayors Leadership Board of Directors met in Columbia, South Carolina, on Thursday and Friday, along with a joint session of the mayors and the nation's police chiefs, where we worked on a, on a variety of key, of key topics, key topic areas around police response on homelessness, racial justice, and, and police-involved shootings. It's been a constant theme of the work of the, of the chiefs and the mayors through our joint collaborations, and a variety of other issues, but those were two of the, two of the most significant. A very useful session around policies and metrics and technologies that we'll be sharing back with, with the chief and with the council as, as well. That was followed by the regular leadership meeting of the conference of mayors, where we were also asked to, to present on the, on both jump bikes and VIA as, as kind of national model innovations at the citywide scale for, for personal mobility and for next-generation public transit. And there are a lot of cities doing some interesting things that are in that, that were in that meeting that are 10, 20 times bigger than us, and so it was great to, great to feature our little town again as a, as a model of, of, you know, really advancing and improving people's lives. And you all know, of course, I told the ice cream, the ice cream VIA story, it's my favorite one, and there's a lot of interest in, in that, in that, in that project as well. And then finally, on Monday, I was in Washington DC for a whirlwind of meetings on our flood protection program. As the council is aware, and I know councilmember Sandin, who's our, our lead on this, and through the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, we are at the stage now where it's time to, to secure federal funding for preliminary engineering and, preliminary engineering and design for the first of the levy projects as part of the federal commitment for our overall $1.1 billion levy project. That's a, it's, it's a heavy lift, it's just a complicated lift, you know, as, as, each of the steps at this, of this $1.1 billion levy project, every week, there's some new surprise bureaucracies, and some new hurdle, and our team, our staff team, our consultant team, our lobbying team, and of course, the council has been really extraordinary at overcoming each and every one of those. It definitely looks like a, you know, some sort of obstacle course TV show that we have succeeded in making it all the way through the season to the end. So we're now at the point where we, where we need the actual checks. And the federal, the, just last week, the Congress passed the appropriations bills that include the COR, and so the COR knows now what money it's going to have for the upcoming, upcoming cycle, and the COR has to develop its work plan for that, for that cycle. So it is the, it's the right moment for us to be in DC pushing for, for the inclusion of that. We're only looking for a few million dollars for this initial design and engineering work, but it's very critical. So, we're also trying then to get, and this is a longer shot, but you got to ask if you want to, if you want to get a chance at winning, and that is to have the federal government include in the 2020 budget, pre-include money for 2020 construction, even though the engineering design hasn't been done yet. And it may work that we're able to accomplish that anyway, just because of the sequencing, but we're making a play for that money now. So I had meetings with Senator Feinstein's office on strategy, and then the White House, and the Office of Management and Budget inside the White House, and then in the Pentagon with the, with the Assistant Secretary of the Army's office, who oversees the COR, and finally, to coordinate again with Congresswoman Matsui. Good response, the folks know our project, you know, after having been there about 1,000 times between us, they know the project well, they get it, they understand the importance of it, they know the commitments that have been made to West Sacramento over the years. And so I'm, I'm optimistic, whether we'll get that second tranche, pre-tranche that we're trying for, that's probably a longer shot, but, but I think we're getting good signals that our continued, you know, advocacy and technical work and doing all the right things is paying off in terms of keeping the project on track. So, and, and I should say, you know, the, I know Ms. Roscoe, this is, this is our first round of these, of 20 years of these, the federal government, the, one reason why the federal government has been so supportive, frankly, of helping us get through a process that most other cities around the country, after Hurricane Katrina, did not succeed in making it this far. I mean, all the crediting issues, or the design issues, or the environmental, or the vegetation on levies issues have tripped out virtually everyone else in the country, especially of our size. But when, when I, whenever there's a new engineer or a new secretary of the army, every time when we tell them, "Look, after Hurricane Katrina, we didn't know what we were going to do," but the first thing that we did do is the people of West Sacramento stepped up and said, "Yeah, we want, we need the federal government's help, but it's our lives, and it's our property, and it's our, it's our businesses, and we're going to pass a sales tax to support this, we're going to pass a property assessment, and we're going to impose a development impact fee at the city council." And we're the only city in the country that has done all three of those things, and that, that commitment to local effort has been, has clearly, clearly has an impact in Washington DC, because they're not, they're only used to people coming hat in hand, and having a small town do what it can locally, I think, has been really important in our success so far. So, more to come. Ms. Roscoe?
Can I add?
Of course.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't know how I neglected to mention that a few meetings ago, this council approved the Downtown Streets Team Program, and as of last Thursday, the group had its first meeting. They meet on Thursdays at 12:30 in the community room on the Department of Social Services. I can't tell you, we had about 30 members of the homeless community who were in attendance, looking for opportunities on that day. We also had representatives from West Sacramento Police Department, Officer Mahaffey joined us, as well as our homeless coordinator, and our city manager also came in to, to witness the energy in that room. There were about half of those folks that showed up had the opportunity to don a yellow shirt on that said Downtown Streets Team. They became members and were welcome to join us in the streets and pick up trash and beautify our community. One of the coolest things I saw, they hit the streets on Monday morning from 8:00 to 12:00, but yesterday, I was driving to work and saw a team out on Jefferson Boulevard, and one of the workers was one of our senior citizens who happens to be, find himself in a position where he's homeless, and from a wheelchair, picking up trash, and, you know, and driving by and honking and seeing these folks feeling good and helping everybody out and getting recognition for the hard work that they're doing, and I think that's a total win for our community. So I'd like to thank this council for giving them the opportunity on behalf of the workers out there. They seem very, very energetic about this, and so if you get a chance to see them, honk your horn, wave hi, and let's give back.
All right. All right, then with that, item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions, and we're deferring all of those until November and beyond. So that brings us to the consent agenda. We have a request from the city manager to remove item 2 from the agenda altogether this evening, due to continuing discussions with the parties. And then we're also going to defer action on item 3 until later in, potentially later in the meeting. We may, we may have to come back and continue the item altogether, but we're going to defer that one until later in the meeting, and remove it from consent, so we would have items 4 and 5 as the consent agenda before.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Roscoe, and seconded by Mr. Johansson. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed. Hearing done, that motion carries, consent agenda is adopted. Item 6 is public hearing and first reading of ordinance 18-2 amending the Stone Lock Development Agreement between the Sacramento-Yolo Port District and the city. Ms. Hamilton?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. We're here before you tonight as a follow-up measure to the Stone Lock 1 Development Agreement, to do, to make a first amendment to the original Stone Lock Development Agreement, removing the Stone Lock 1 property from the original agreement. It's primarily a cleanup item, now that the other development agreement is fully effective, and there is an overlap between the two. And so, the, the changes are to the legal description and the plat map that's contained within the exhibits to the development agreement. And for those who don't read legal descriptions, attachment 1 has a pictorial showing the area west of Jefferson Boulevard that's being removed. That's the property being removed. So this item did go to the Planning Commission, they unanimously recommended approval, and also supported that the item is, could be found to be categorically exempt under a Class 5 exemption from SEQA, which is a minor land use alteration. So that is my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, we are on item 6. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for time, Ladesma. Right, then we'll open the public hearing on item 6. We don't have any requests to speak, but it is a public hearing, so does anyone wish to address the council on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, return to the council for any further questions, discussion, or motion?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing, any opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries. We're now going to return to item 3, and due to, due to the proximity of the proposed action, of the project, subject to the proposed action to my residence, my property that I own, I'm recusing myself from the side, I'm going to turn the gavel over to Mayor Protem Ladesma. Thank you. All right. Let's run item 3. This is approval, I'm sorry, Resolution 1871, approving map 5149, Bridge District Phase 4, Home South. Is there, this is a consent item order, so we can just?
That's correct.
Okay, so unless there's any questions from the council?
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So let the mayor know, come back, please.
Excuse me, do we need to call for a roll call vote?
Okay. Well, go ahead and do that.
You certainly can do that.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Johansson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ladesma?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ladesma, and then I'll reflect to an abstain on Mayor Cabaldon and an absent on Senator.
Is that it, Madam Ho? That's it? Okay, thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
All right, then that brings us to item 7, which is consideration of Resolution 18-65 transferring appropriations of $30,000 from work order 62127 to work order 62128 for park shade structure projects in fiscal year 2018-19, an award of contract to purchase shade structures for Summerfield and Westfield Park play equipment. Mr. Saroski? Mr. Roscoe.
Good evening, council, mayor. Give you some pretty pictures here. Tonight's presentation is regarding the shade shelter installation at Summerfield and Westfield Parks. I'm seeking council approval of the construction contract. You know, when I first started working for the Parks and Community Services back in 1989, we had three shade shelters in three parks. The parks were Bright Park, Elkhorn, and Sand Combs. The number of parks has increased quite a bit since 1989. Now we have 37 parks with 14 shade shelters. The Park Master Plan update was initiated this fall 2017. Oops, went too far. And community input was received through a number of different measures. The community input on facility amenity and prioritized needs were identified in either low, medium, or high priority. Shade came up in the high priority twice, as covered picnic areas and shaded play areas. The General Plan of 2035 has identified that to facilitate year-round use of the parks, major upgrades to public parks include shade and, should include shade and wind protection. It also identified to improve existing parks that the city shall assign high priority to funding improvements and rehabilitation of existing parks. On May 23rd, 2018, council approved the five-year CIP plan, adopted the amendments of the CIP program budget for fiscal year 2018 and 19. The projects approved using Measure K funds include the addition of two shade structures for Westfield Park and Summerfield Park. The report also identified projects in the three years following the biennial budget that are programmed but not yet budgeted. The financial strategies for the shade structures include Measure K funding, grant funding when possible, and the public-private partnership. Currently, we have a private, a public partnership with Wesac Plays, and most recently, Wesac Plays had the Concert in the Park out at Bright Park. And the next fundraiser event that they're raising money for, that would go to the shade shelter program is scheduled for October 28th, and that's going to be held at Bridgeway Lakes, and that's the Fall Festival. The proposed designs for Summerfield Park include a sail design. With the extra funding we're receiving from the partnership, we're able to look for more design enhancements, and sails are a little bit more expensive than the typical hip construction. For Westfield Park, we also have a shade design, and we've included a hip design, but it's a double hip designed to cover a larger play area. Oops, sorry. Well, that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions or answers?
Questions? Ms. Roscoe.
Can you tell me what informed the design for each of the parks, how you chose the design of the sail, the structures?
We seek, we took, put out an RFP to design manufacturers, and we asked them to submit designs, and we based our selection on their designs. And the company we chose, we felt like they provided the best designs.
Is this the same company that provided the sail, the structures for the other parks?
It is not.
U.S. Shades provided for Bright Park, and this will be MRC. Okay. Does it have any, I mean, other than the sun protection that it will, you know, generally give, is there anything in the materials that is maybe SPF or any other, anything special about the material it's made with?
No, it's similar to the Bright Park, it'll still be the SPF protection. It'll hold a little bit of the rain, it'll still drip, but it won't be, you won't feel it as if you're out in the open in the rain.
And do they have a proposed, like, shelf life?
Yeah, these are warranted for 20 years.
Is there an opportunity to comment or just question? Thank you. I, I'm really excited that we're having this on calendar tonight. My children play at Summerfield Park Monday through Friday, and I think, you know, I could represent many of the parents in this community who would really like to extend their trips to the park by allowing their children to play longer, if they, you know, are a little bit more comfortable, especially during times of inclement, whether, whether it be hot or cold, or rainy. But it's, you know, it's an opportunity to give our children a safer place to play. And, I mean, as a kid, I remember sliding down those metal slides, you know, during 102 weather, and that wasn't real fun. Well, it was, but, you know, it wasn't very comfortable. And so to think about the opportunities that are afforded to our children today, and thanks to your hard work, and the hard work of our community with Wesac Play, as well as our Parks Director and her staff, I'm really, I'm really happy to know that we can also extend the shelf life of our play structures, which are a tremendous investment. I mean, you assume that if the sun's not beating down and weakening the structures, we would get a lot more use in years to come. So I'm excited about this, and I appreciate your presentation.
Thanks.
Mr. Johannesen.
Yeah, thank you, Chris, for the presentation. I'm a supporter of this as well, we do need more, more structures. So on the issue of the warranty, you mentioned that it's warranted for 20 years, what does that include?
That includes failure of the fabric. I'm sure we can cover some of the bolts, but mostly the concern is the fabric. The fabric is the piece that gets the most wear.
Do we have an idea of the, kind of the operation, or the maintenance costs for all of facilities? Because as we get more and more, that's going to be a larger expense to keep the shade structures maintained.
Yeah, regular maintenance isn't really required, it's only when it becomes vandalized, and then we need to install patches.
Okay, so structurally, they're pretty sound for quite a while.
Yes.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Great, I'm joining my colleagues in, in supporting this, but also just thank you to the, to you, Chris, and to the Director Tuttle and the Parks Department, I know the finance folks, and looking at Measure K, you know, the Measure K fund balances to find any opportunities to be able to advance these. I think this is a great example of, of folks in the community taking an issue into their own hands. They knew, they knew the resource limitations that we had, and Wesac Play's been just incredible in, in not just like identifying something that they wanted to do, but they've done an outstanding job of mobilizing people in ways that, yeah, people are writing checks, but there's also, there's a movement in the city, and I think one of the things I've appreciated really about Wesac Play, remembering the first time that they were here, that city council had kind of been demanding that they, you know, their part go to the front of the line, and that we pay for new shade structure for them, and we're like, hey, we own these other parks too, in neighborhoods throughout the city, and really to their credit to say, yeah, we, we get it. And not only that, we're doubling down, you know, cities, you say you're committed to, you know, shade structures all over the city, we're, we're going to lead that. And they were right there, like, five minutes later, they were there, kaboom, you know, ready, you know, ready to volunteer and help build that, that play structure, and then they've been raising money, you know, in every part of the city, to serve every part of the city. And it's been terrific to watch an entirely new, you know, nonprofit and movement emerge in the city, and then to see, and so I really appreciate the, but the council and staff rising to the occasion and saying, okay, we see that. You know, when, when folks in the community step up and, and are putting their, their sweat equity and their dollars into making something happen, that that's a moment for us to come together and invest even more, right, and try to, try to accelerate and multiply the resources that are being put into, into this really critical issue. So it's, this, I think it's heartwarming in a lot of ways, for, you know, the reasons that Ms. Roscoe said, you know, about the, you know, at a single park with, with, you know, with a single child, and their ability to play, and to play safely, and to play comfortably. And then to see that happen throughout the community has been just really terrific. And so advancing that with this, with the item that we have before us tonight, I think it's really, it's a great step forward, and it allows us to extend, all the donations that have come so far to Wesac Play can be extended even further, and, and also the resources that we have. So congratulations and thanks, this is a great, this is a great step forward.
Okay, with that, then, is there a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Roscoe, and seconded by Mayor Protam LaDesma, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Item 8 is presentation and discussion of procurement of a computerized maintenance management system, CMMS. Mr. Roberts?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is William Roberts, and I'm the Public Works Operations Manager.
Welcome home from Kansas City.
Some great ribs there, by the way.
Coincidence.
Okay, the purpose of this presentation is to seek council's feedback and authorization to proceed with RFP to procure a CMMS. There we go. Little introduction, tonight I'll be briefly speaking about the current work order flow, the definition of the CMMS, the CMMS capabilities, the CMMS modules, the CMMS implementation, and the budget cost impact. As you can see, this is Public Works Operations' current work order process. This is a sobering depiction of the time spent processing a work order from start to finish. Let me go through the steps here, and I'll briefly describe what's going on, and for the folks at home, I'm hoping they can view this as well. Step 1, currently, Public Works Administration staff receives work order requests from customers via phone calls, customer walk-ins at the corporation yard, emails, public stuff, and often internal requests from the city. Step 2, once received, operations and maintenance administration staff manually inputs required information related to the request onto a hard copy paper work orders. As you follow along, down to step 3, the administration staff hand delivers hard copied work order to the designated chief maintenance worker and relays this information. Chief then calls appropriate field staff to respond to the request. Step 4, field crew completes work in field, and once complete, crews make notes on scratch paper, writing down important line items such as labor, materials, equipment, special notes, et cetera. And let me back up here, so scratch paper, just take note of that. And step 5, we're looking at, once field crew returns to the corporation yard, they receive hard copied work order from the chief. Field crew fills out the work order from information gathered from their note taken in the field. Sometimes, field crews generate a second hard copied work order in the field, not knowing the original work order was already generated. And step 6, after field crews complete work order by hand, they hand deliver the work order to the chief. Chief then reviews for accuracy and hand delivers final work order to the administration staff for them to file. So as you can see, this demonstrates inefficiencies in employee time management, improper management of work orders, increased downtime, inability to produce efficient reports, and improper asset management tracking. So the current workflow and issues that Public Works currently is going through right now is the, currently work orders are handwritten, which depicts loss of employee productivity, efficiencies, and redundancy. Work order copies are often misplaced, this issue generates additional work orders and lack of original information in history. Public Works currently utilize multiple databases and programs such as Excel, Access, Public Stuff, Field of Logic, and Census Flex Net Logic. Each system is used for a specific purpose. The programs do not communicate to each other, which generates different reports and very inaccurate data. Having work order follow-ups is critical for Public Works' request, location work order history, asset management, and so on. Operations currently process is manually pulling out work orders from a three-ring binder, flipping through hundreds of pages. So just picture pulling out a, you know, 15-inch three-ring binder, just flipping through all these pages, trying to find some past history on the work that's been accomplished in the city of West Sacramento. And work order redundancy is not only created in the field, but office personnel as well. Admin staff and management are often tasked with producing reports requested from a public records request, internal staff, let's see, and city of West Sacramento's executive team, and so on. A few examples are, now, these are real-life scenarios that recently happened, so I really wanted to talk to council and the public and let them know that this is what we're faced with on a daily basis. So the first one here is a stormwater pump station maintenance report. This report is very important in that it sets the guidelines on flood rates for the citizens of West Sacramento. When this request was put through a couple months ago, one of my superintendents spent a considerable amount of time looking for these records and what was done to these pumping facilities to execute the, the work order. So again, the superintendent pulled out a couple three-ring binders again, and filtered through hundreds of pages of these work orders, hoping to find something related to our pumping facilities and the type of maintenance that was, was actually conducted on these facilities. So again, it's very, very time-consuming, you know, he was walking around looking for, you know, people that have been working here for a very long time, and trying to capture that history, which is very time-consuming. As you look further, the dashboard information, Public Works admin staff developed a dashboard that gives a visual of tables, engages to track the health of current maintenance progress against benchmarks and goals. This requires a great deal of time for the admin staff to manually input hard copied work orders into a spreadsheet, and doesn't give the management day-to-day progression on what's going on in the field. It's nice to have a dashboard, but it's really nice to have real-time, real-time data. And lastly, the sanitary sewer flows require immediate reporting to the California Integrated Water Quality System. Currently, there's no modern methodology on creating follow-up work orders at troubled areas that would prevent further SSOs. So I included a sample work order that Public Works admin staff and also the field workers, and well, basically, everybody that is tasked with daily. So as you can see this, and hopefully the folks, folks at home can see this, number one, it's very messy, it's handwritten, sometimes, you know, employees' handwriting skills are different than others, so it's really hard to depict on what's going on. Also, the data is replaced in the wrong areas. So the admin staff is tasked with triaging every work order, making sure that things are in the right place at the right time. There's a lot of mistakes on this work order, and I didn't pick this, the worst one, so I didn't flip through hundreds of pages of work orders to find you this example, so...
Is this your work order? Are you picking on somebody else at the moment?
This is last year, no, no, this is not mine. But no, I'm just trying, you know, show something here that we're faced with daily, and, and also, you look at the top-right corner, there's the admin, they stamp entered, so what that means is, they triage this work order, they go into the database, Excel spreadsheet, very primitive for what we're doing here, and they actually enter this into the system. So, and I brought the council, and Mr. Mayor, and the public, here's the actual work orders. So this one's for storm, it's yellow, this one is for water, which is blue, and this one is for sewer. So whatever happens in the field, it's kind of color-coded. So imagine flipping through, you know, you know, roughly 6,000 of these a year, or we actually produce 6,000 of these a year. So if we were to go back for a public records request, it takes quite a long time to produce that report.
Knocking on wood, that's all.
So what is a computerized maintenance management system, otherwise known as CMMS? Computerized maintenance management system serves as a foundation for an effective asset management program. Especially, the work order management module within any CMMS documents or reports day-to-day activities, and were performed by operations and maintenance crews on various infrastructure assets. assets. Accurate and reliable information from the CMMS can potentially be used to optimize O&amp;M activities and also feed into capital improvement planning process, which is a good asset. Presently, the city of West Sacramento does not have a CMMS, an up-to-date asset management system for preventive and maintenance, scheduling, which is critical for work order management, lifecycle costing, and capital planning. Although the city has a variety of primitive manual work order processes in use, the current methodologies lack integration capabilities and more accessibility. Staff seek to procure a single asset management and work order system that can be used citywide. Little bit about the capability of CMMS. Work order generation tracking by equipment component, maintenance staff can be more productive and efficient when a CMMS software is used to dispatch work orders quickly and efficiently. CMMS software makes it easy to track customer requests and generate work orders. Different assets and procedures can be grouped together in a single work order, and you can quickly assign labor hours to various work orders for faster processing and closing. Historical tracking of all work orders, maintenance workers record the completion of tasks in the CMMS software. A history of the maintenance tasks performed on each asset is available for review. This can inform future purchases and assist in identification of assets that may be nearing the end of their useful lifecycle. Furthermore, if you track maintenance activities in a CMMS, when employees leave, the knowledge does not leave along with them. So, again, we're losing a lot of knowledge within the city of West Sacramento. People are retiring, 30-year employees, and so they're gone. All that information is gone. And what we're doing now is, we have nothing really to track it besides these hard copy work orders. So, when they leave, it's a loss. Talk a little bit about the storing of the maintenance procedures. You can also sit down with your best maintenance employees and put together performance standards on how to test or how to best complete jobs that all new employees can benefit from that knowledge and follow best practices. Let me go back here. Okay, real-time reports. One of the greatest benefits of CMMS is the ability to pull data from software and generate predefined or custom reports. Graphs, dashboards, any data point tracked in CMMS software can be viewed, allowing management to make decisions that are based on current in-depth data. Verify regulatory compliance. The only way to keep outside regulators at bay is to have your internal maintenance plan functioning at its best, at its peak. The ability to pull any record anytime on any asset is priceless information and keeps staff accountable for their work, reduces labor costs, reduces overall facility cost, and keeps the longevity of our assets intact. We establish performance standards, which is huge, by utilizing CMMS that will generate employee total time on work orders, thus giving operations management a performance standard baseline. And the transportation permit process is very primitive and efficient. A T-permit administrator receives applications via fax, hard copies, and physical mail. This demonstrates inefficiencies and loss of employee time. CMMS has the potential to incorporate the transportation permitting process, which will streamline the current practice, thus providing increase in customer service. Although T-permits is not within the current scope of CMMS, staff is looking into the feasibility of incorporating it. And lastly, the benefits to other departments, which is huge. Public Works will be taking the lead on the CMS implementation initially. Management will be presenting the CMMS to the other departments such as parks, police department, fire department, CDD, IT, finance, and finally, the port of West Sacramento. That's a lot of stuff. So, with this, I have a little visual for the folks at home and also council and Mr. Mayor, if you look at this. All these capabilities tie into one central hub. And as you can see here, this is CMMS. So, if you go around the circle, it has a three-woman customer call center capability, which has the capability of maybe replacing the public stuff. The three-woman call center will actually be a huge benefit for the customers where they can go to a link on the website, file a complaint, or give us some kudos. It creates a work order from this module and it gets tracked or sent over to the chief right away. So, as you can see, going on the wheel, basically everything I talked about, and it's a great So, some of the CMMS modules that are more important for the Public Works operations is our work orders. Work orders are created automatically from the maintenance schedule core module. Work orders can also be created from service requests with a single click. The equipment, the equipment module manages your list of assets. CMMS distinguishes make and model information from equipment information, eliminating the need to maintain this information many times for identical equipment. The maintenance schedules and procedures, procedures are templates work orders. The maintenance schedule process creates actual work order from these procedures according to a schedule. The parts, the parts module manages our list of parts. We can identify one or more storage locations and vendors for parts with core functionality and issue parts to work orders. And lastly, reporting, the CMS database and structure is fully documented to help you write reports and track records. So, the implementation schedule, Public Works formed an internal team of representatives from each department. This team is currently working cohesively on the CMMS implementation strategies. So, as you can see here, the scope of services by the vendor, our internal team sat through various CMMS vendors, I want to say roughly four, then we had a couple of the web presentations, which were pretty good. So, this gave our team a good idea if the CMMS would be a benefit to the whole, all different departments and also to our customers. The EU Commission presentation was presented by Public Works to the Environment Utilities Commission September 12, 2018. The council workshop, I'm here before you now, so. And request for proposal, Public Works staff is seeking RFP by this mid-October of 2018. And the council approval of contract, once staff determine CMS vendor by grading and ranking criteria, we'll take this back to council for approval by December of 2018. And the complete implementation, we're looking at, be fully functional implemented into Public Works operations by March of 2019. And lastly, the training, training of field staff and admin will be complete by April of 2019. It's a tight schedule, but we're very excited to get something going, so we're going to stick to the schedule. What everybody wants to know is what the cost. So, we're looking at, as you can see from the slide, here's the high-end cost of the CMMS proposal. The low-end cost will be roughly $387,000. Software is up to $500,000, IT staff support up to $50,000. The hardware, personal devices, PDAs, or the iPads, whatever the vendor comes up with, up to $24,000. And so, the high-end, we're looking at $574,000. The proposed funding, Public Works proposed funding is based on 44 and a half employees. Staff proposes using a combination of interdepartmental funding that will be based on a shared percentage allocation based on number of employees in each section. This methodology will spread the cost proportionate to each cost center. Only difference is, road and measure K will be a one-time cost to the general fund. They respectfully recommend that the council provide feedback and authorize staff to proceed with the RFP process. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be very happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Right. Mr. Joe Hannison.
Yeah, good presentation. Yeah, I think this is a good example of how we could use technology to improve better government efficiencies in this case. But I think, you know, along the line that the, I think the, I think comments on the commission provided that we need to look at the savings. What is this actually going to save? Because it is a lot of money, half a million dollars, half a million dollars plus. But the extent that we can save, you know, twice that or whatever, I think that's going to be really important. The other thing is, when we're looking at this kind of technology, you're going to send a request for vendors to provide proposals, and you're probably going to get a lot of proprietary solutions.
Sure.
And what that means is, basically, you get locked in to that solution for a long time. So, you know, looking at what it costs to maintain, for each different vendor to maintain their system over time. So, you look at the life, I'm sure you're going to be looking at the life of the cost of this as you go along. But also, when you're looking at this proprietary, and, you know, there's new developments coming all the time on how this type of system works, you know, to make sure that you've got some way to export whatever you've got into a new system. So, you can transfer to a new system without having to recreate the wheel. Now, in terms of, so I think it's great to be able to get the data and to just streamline that process, which looks like it's been horrendous. I could just imagine going through binders of handwritten, and people can't read my handwriting. Your engineers are probably about the same. But, you know, just having to deal with that. And then, just the mistakes that can happen along the way. To have a nice, clean record of all this maintenance, to be able to make data-driven choices on when to do maintenance, when to replace, and that type of thing. I think we should have some kind of idea of what savings we're going to accrue because of all that. So, I think, let's see, I think that's it. I think, yeah, just wait and see what it looks like.
Sure.
And, but looking forward to seeing more about this.
Thank you.
Ms. Roscoe.
Those are my comments exactly. I liked your presentation very much, and I'm excited about the possibilities. I mean, it sounds pretty archaic and primitive, for sure, like a handyman's coming to your door as opposed to a city employee, which, you know, is, you know, I'd love to see that be different.
Sure.
You know, and these days, everything that's efficient is, you know, digital. And, you know, being able to communicate in the field in real-time and direct an employee to do, you know, a certain thing, or if there's, you know, neighbors, for example, who have similar problems and you can handle two at one, I can understand the efficiencies. But I also had the same sentiment that the Environmental Utilities Commissioner has expressed, as well as Councilmember Joe Hannison. In order to justify this, I'd have to know, like, how soon we would realize those savings. And, because while it sounds like a fantastic amenity and something that I think we absolutely should have, I am stricken by the investment, the initial investment. And I wonder, I mean, because it's such a steep investment, are there any options for, like, say, for example, because of the turnover in technology these days? I mean, are there companies that rent this or have other types of options as opposed to just the big investment and then it's ours to keep and repair? And then, I also had a question. You'd mentioned that it could be used by other departments, and would that be an additional investment to expand the program to other departments? Or would it just be, we invest in that one initial investment, then everybody gets it and we just piece it out and share? That was another question I'd have. The other thing was, you know, as far as the payment, is it just one lump sum or is there options to space it out over time, other financing options that won't necessarily take a hit to our funds, you know, all at once? But, other than that, I mean, it sounds like we definitely need to be moving in this direction, if we shouldn't have already been there already. But I understand, you know, with limited resources, there's only so much we can do. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, if I can elaborate a little bit, the vendors that we did speak to, as far as the one price, that's a dream. I love that. From what I understand is, there's like, I want to say, maybe Rob Miller's here, but the modules, so if Sac, West Sacramento Police Department wants to jump on this and/or parks, which they're very excited, by the way, there might be some type of a hookup fee or module that we can. But, you know, I'm thinking, most of this already has that in there. For instance, a fleet module that we're already paying for in the price here, well, you know, West Sacramento Police Department and Fire Department and parks, they have a fleet. So, this would just be jumping onto our system. So, I'm looking into that as far as the different vendors, and maybe when RFP does come out, they can present and say, "Look, this is what we can do for you." And I do know that one vendor was willing to work with the, as far as different ways we can fund it, you know, not all at once, and can you knock down the price? Because the ongoing maintenance for this, the program could be like $30,000 to $50,000. Well, if we don't pay that much, can we negotiate somewhere else? There's always some wiggle room that we can work with, and that's the good thing about the RFP, because they're willing to, of course, have our business, but on our terms.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Protagonism LaDesma.
Thank you. And a lot of good questions, and thank you for the presentation. You kind of had me at hello, or you should have showed that paper work order, and that would have been enough for us to sort of understand what we're.
Sure.
What the problem statement is.
I want to approach the bench, but I'll just stay here and show you from.
Well, I just saw the handwritten notes, and certainly, you know, kind of, you all of sudden connotate the fact that, you know, we're still working in a very manual analog world. And so, you've articulated the need for it. I think there is a sense of, as these proposals come forward for systems or databases or whatever, that we do need to have some sort of measure of what we're solving for. You articulated it visually and sort of through process steps.
Sure.
But there needs to be either some sort of, some return, we're going to gain an efficiency, we're going to get an error reduction rate. Those things should be, you articulated it, but there's, you know, how many errors do you see a month? I mean, you articulated, you know, it takes you two hours to go through a paper with the stuff.
Sure.
And it's just, just by way of discipline, how we come through with these, it's important that we, not just as you bring it to us, as you contemplate them, before even bring it to us or to the commissions, it's important that that frame of reference come into place. But I certainly get the need. I do have, so, this question, CMS, CMMS itself, is it a specific software package? Or is it just the concept of an application that you're asking?
Yeah, it's the concept of an application. There's many different vendors out there that offer different ways, methodologies that they can capture the data and present it. So, that's a broad term, the CMMS.
I just want to make sure, because it says, in the staff report, it refers to as an application package.
Sure.
But I want to ensure that, okay, so, in the RFP, as you're articulating, part of where, as you go forward, because there is a concern that I would have in this sort of investment. I'm not afraid of the investment, it's a big number. But the danger of it is, this is going to be system-wide, and as you move forward on contemplating it, it really becomes important about the vendor we choose, whether it's hard coding things, are we going to have an obsolete technology or platform, companies that, you know.
Sure.
You know, frankly, I've run into this quite a bit, where you have dated systems of record or whatever, that you are, you know, a regulation keeping these, you know, keeping these records, but then the people who designed the technology are gone, it's been surpassed two times by other technology, because it was the thing at the moment when you got it and seemed like the most efficient, best idea. You're, 10 years later, you're going, now we're stuck with this, and who do we have to maintain that? And so, that's just a cost factor to kind of keep in mind as you go forward. I know there have been solutions that haven't gone through, some pretty big technology initiatives myself in my professional career. You know, the common phrase that I'm hearing, code versus configuration, right? So, once you start hard coding things, you've got to keep those folks around, you've got to keep the technology, the technology has to be relevant, the skill set, everything has to be relevant. So, again, those are kind of things that are in my mind about ensuring that the need you've articulated, and now, as you go forward with it, it has to be available to be flexible and will be relevant in five to 10 years unusable and not have an operating. But it also has, I think, Councilor Roscoe brought it up, is scalable, so that it integrates with other systems, maybe you can add data to it, or, and you're starting to articulate that. So, in the RFP, as you put that out, we want to make sure we're looking for those solutions. So, again, it certainly is an important point by way of making sure those vendors understand that, yeah, we're looking for something to solve this problem and plug into maybe these two other systems or have these modules. And so, again, just to be able to articulate. Which brings me to kind of the modulating and sort of the half a million dollars you've articulated. I mean, this is likely going to get RFP providers who are going to come in and also want to work with you on a consultative basis to understand. work with you on a consultative basis to understand, understand your, our requirements. And so that's, that's what worries me about the bid is that some folks are going to want to come in with a bid that says, yeah, the, the software and everything else. So in the, in the conversations you had, you said you talked to a couple of vendors. Did we, did you talk through maybe some proof of concepts of what you were thinking? Did that include the time it would take to get requirements, business requirements from you?
That's correct. The vendors we did speak to, and of course, we're very privy to, you know, they'll tell you anything because if, if you can pay for it, they'll tell you they can, they can flip the world upside down. So the, our team that we developed, basically, you know, Parks, IT, everybody, the vendors did say, yeah, we can, we can import any data that you have on hand because we stressed to them, we have, like I said, three ring binders full of just everything. I mean, it's crazy, we have roomfuls, so they can import all this data. And so that was a good thing, you know, but we're very aware and careful of what they.
Well, yeah, and, and that's an important thing to, they'll tell you that in the proof of concepts or in the meetings. Which brings me to sort of, as you go, be very specific around the requirement you actually believe you need because they'll tell you those things in consulting areas. And when you bring them in, they're going to be asking for, okay, but to do that, that's another three weeks of development time we're going to need and we didn't anticipate you needed that. So be very, be very clear about your initial requirements around it and then what you want to build outside of it that may not be in scope for the RFP. It just has to be scalable to that. So that, and, and consider as well, because again, thinking that a firm is going to come in and say they're going to build this for us, we might want to consider some gating process in terms of, these things can, you know, it was a pretty tight schedule I saw on their, on their presentation. RP back, I want to say, I don't have the thing in front of me, but I want to say you guys are in implementation in April, May, March of 2019? I don't know how simple or complicated.
April 2019.
Yeah, I don't know how, if they can do that, if this is a pretty simple job, I don't, I don't know. But again, I just worry about their, you know, their, we're thinking a little aggressively on this or maybe I'm thinking about it wrong. And, and so part of what we want to have is we manage the, the development and implementation processes, have some really solid project management and gating process around that because we want milestones to say, I don't want to get two-thirds into this of their work and it's April, they already missed a deadline and the costs are going to go up X amount. So having gating processes to where we're, having milestones of where they get through is just kind of prudent at this point. So I know I'm looking at the finance and folks are looking at me like I'm crazy, but on this firm experience, you just want, they're there to serve us to make sure there's processes along the way so that, so software companies say they can do this and they're RFP and they get into it. And when they, we haven't met those deliverables, we, we, we like, okay, then we need to make, they can take a timeout or we need to shut it off.
Sure.
Those are just important controls around that. So again, just, just some things that are on my mind. This is a workshop, I believe, but driven allocation. And if you, as you go forward, I'm just, these are kind of things that you hear all the time, the IT projects can get out of hand and costs and we didn't know. I'm putting us on the spot now, I'm telling you, those things can happen. And so the, the enemy of that thing is process and making sure there's good management around it, going into it and it's eyes wide open at every step. So those are my comments. Thank you. I appreciate this and again, I, we want to see this happen.
Sure.
Because I can't imagine that we're still walking around with binders and hand-delivering work orders and it's, it's the right thing, but this is make sure we go about it and get it the right product and do it the right way.
Scratch paper.
Scratch paper.
Scratch paper.
Yeah, so I agree 300% with everything that's been said. Absolutely, I really appreciate the insights and the, the experience that the council members all bring to this and also the, the need to do it. And this, this is the less flashy sorts of innovation that, that, you know, that organization has to undertake and that you're clearly undertaking with some enthusiasm and that's fantastic. This is, you know, this, we ought to be able to get beyond this and, and whether it's errors or the amount of staff time or whatever, I, I think you'll get there in terms of showing the, the arc of savings or improved efficiency or delivery of services. But I do think we, we have to be able to describe what that looks like, both for ourselves and for, for the public. I'd also like to know when we get later through it, what the, but the, you may have said, but I don't think so, the proportion of this that's general fund? You were describing the way that it would be allocated across the water fund, the sewer fund and everything else, but what, what is the proportion that's general fund of the total? And we keep talking about, you, for whatever reason, you anchored on the high end of your forecast, so we keep talking about $574,000, but that was your, that was the high end of your forecast, it was, with the low end of which was 384.
384, correct. The high end was, was 574 and that was based on the, some of the vendors, the average, what we've been hearing from them. So, yeah.
While you're looking for, so have you also, are there vendors in this space that, that do this as software as a service and not where we're purchasing, you know, a full-blown solution that we then own and have to watch quickly become an anachronism or?
Sure, you know, that's something we can look into. Basically, I wasn't aware of that. The vendors that were approached us did not have that option, but I'm sure, you know, if that option was out there, we can look into that, you know, as far as that methodology. But yeah, we're all for anything we can do to be creative financing to help us, City of West Sacramento, to make this happen.
Well, I know both, both Rob and the deputy city manager are both quite familiar with the, with cloud-based software as a service approaches. So, you know, if it's, if, if, if they exist in this, in this sector as, at all, I would hope we would construct an RFP that would, that would allow for that to be considered because this is definitely one of those areas, I think a couple of my colleagues have highlighted, where you can almost see the mortality of this system.
Yes.
Given the way in which information is collected and processed and the, and the relationship to the cloud and everything else over, over time.
Sure.
So interested in that piece of it. The, the other piece that you described was the public stuff, public stuff system. And so the public stuff, I recall us using public stuff for what, Access West Sacramento, I thought, but I thought for West Sac Connect, we used Acela or are we using both still or one or the other? Is one doing something and the other doing something else?
I do know that we use an Acela, but from the feedback I've received from the staff and field workers that it doesn't really pertain and do what we're looking for as far as Public Works operations.
Sure, but I'm, I'm just trying to first figure out like where, what is, where's the public stuff, what's the public stuff footprint in what we currently do in the, in the non-Public Works operations side?
Mayor, members of council, we do use public stuff. It's, it's an Acela company. We use it for Access West Sacramento. What they were looking at in this option was where it's deficient is when citizens submit a request, they can't turn it into a work order, go take care of and keep tracking it. So they typically, it either sits and they're disjointed and so they will update this one, but not update public stuff. So we're looking at a system that would hopefully merge the two together, either by replacing public stuff or bringing on a system that would at least communicate to it through some API.
So if we were to replace public stuff, does that mean a new, a new app and platform for, for, for citizen users then?
Yes.
So I, I, I don't want to go there if we don't have to, right? They, I mean, the, getting user adoption of, of an app in a city as diverse as ours and, you know, all the, all the things you have to sign off on, you know, I'm promising, you know, the data's not going to be used and here's my email address and whatever. It's just hard to just like announce a switch because we, we used to use Access West Sac, now we use West Sac Connect, a different, you know, different system. These aren't, that, the fundamental way in which citizens interact with the customer service side of the government can't change every other, you know, every three years. So I'm not like absolutely opposed to it, but it better be a really great user experience and user interface that, you know, look at that, oh my God, this is way better than public stuff. So it's doing something more for the consumer, for the, for the citizen too.
There's no reason, there's no reason after it plays.
Yeah, if there's a solution that, that can figure out how to, how to make the, the crosswalk from public stuff into the CMMI, that makes more sense to me than, than, than assuming that a public works oriented CMMI system is going to be, is going to have a really fantastic citizen user face. It's possible, it's, you know, there could be a unicorn out there. But I, but I do think, you know, it's not, it's not a really reasonable for us to expect citizens to change their, their, their basic app for interacting with the city here a couple of years. And I don't know about, you know, others, I find West Sac Connect's pretty, pretty usable at the citizen side. Of course, not if it's not actually translating to a work order. So this is a, this is an important issue, but I think paying attention to the broader user experience is important. And we, and in that particular case, we don't want the tail to wag the dog.
I've heard from a couple of few vendors that, that was one of the concerns that, that we brought up because of public, they are used to what they see. It's a, it's a pretty app and whatnot, but it's a possibility that the vendor can maybe mimic public stuff that would, wouldn't really change the interface too much for the user and the customer. But on the back end, it's, it's much more productive for the employees to track work orders and whatnot. So it's an option. We can look into that.
Yeah, but even if it looks the same, if I have to set, if, if, you know, if I live in a home park and the internet service is just okay and I've got to set up a whole new account, even if it, it's, you know, you've just, you've got to take the perspective of, of the user in that space. And, and West Sac Connect is about more than just public works, right? So, you know, I, I use it to report noise violations, for example, or, you know, a car parked in a bike lane or something. So it's, it's code enforcement and other units of the city as well. So you, you can't, you can't segment, unless one of these CMMIs also has a great solution for, you know, filing election complaints to the city clerk or whatever, it's not going to, it's not really going to get the job done that West Sac Connect does.
Okay.
Any other comments? All right, so although you indicated this is a workshop, but you're actually asking us for authority tonight to proceed with issuing the RFP.
That's correct, Mayor.
I'm going to the recommended action. Second.
Oh, is there another question? Ms. Roscoe?
That's fine. No, because we, we'll have an opportunity to come back and, and discuss this once we get a return on those RFPs, correct?
That's correct. It's going to be a, a road that we're, we're faced with, but we're willing to take the challenge and let the council and Mr. Mayor know exactly what we're doing as far as the steps.
Okay.
Very cautious, cautious with that.
Right, so we're, there's no commitment that we're going to approve the, the proposal ultimately.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for bringing a little energy to work orders.
Thank you.
Folks think this, you know, this, this job is mostly just making decisions, but this is the guts of what, what government really works for citizens. So really appreciate the attention to innovating in the inside. Okay, Council calendar, Ms. Berlin.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members. A couple of items that are coming up in the near future. This weekend is the cyclocross Grand Prix and that's at Riverwalk Park, starting at 8:00 AM on Saturday and is also continues on through Sunday. Then on October 12th, Friday, we have the Bear Crop Science Community Service Day at Sam Combs Park where they're redoing the dog park there. That starts at 10:00 AM. And then on October 13th is Fire Station 45 Open House. That's 11:00 AM. And just an update to the calendar in your packet, the Riverfront Streetcar JPA Board Meeting on October 16th has been canceled. And then finally, coming up at the end of October, we have a date for our Mill Street Pier Kinetic Art Installation and Celebration of the Barn Opening and that is on October 29th at 5:30 PM.
Okay, any questions on the calendar? Seeing none, city manager reports?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to cap off the, the end of the legislative session with an update on a bill that we took pretty quick action on to urge a veto by the governor. That was AB 2681. It had to do with requiring local building departments to create inventories of a size of the vulnerable buildings. You can imagine this would have been a, a heavy burden on, on local building departments, not just our own, but it would be statewide. So we joined a coalition, acted under our policy, submitted a veto letter and the governor did veto the bill. So that was AB 2681. And so that, that kind of concluded our, our activity on, on the legislative side. We will have a full report on the, on the session. The deputy city manager is working with our state advocacy firm to produce that, so that'll be to the city council soon. Thank you.
All right. The governor also vetoed the economic development legislation that, that the Greater Sacramento Economic Council was sponsoring despite our advice.
That's correct. Not, not, not much of a surprise to us, but I know that effort's going to be renewed. I think that's their plan next year.
Yes.
On the, on their, I think that was signed, a bill by Scott Weiner, having to do with arena housing requirements and using real data. I forgot the, the number of the bill that would.
Right, I, I can't remember also. I think what we'll do on that is we'll make sure that's included in the report to council so that you'll get a memo that's categorized.
I was just looking for, but I, I read a little bit about it a few days ago and, you know, it's, it's just a real, could be real impactful to the region and to us in terms of how they, kind of how they're accounting, accounting for housing and your obligation for that. So this is one that caught my attention if we can, I'll look for it and I'll let you know when that.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's in there.
We have, not recently, but we, we have in the past extended invitation to our two, to our state assembly member and our state senator to come at following the end of the legislative session for, for them to present their end of the, end of the session roundup. So I don't know what the next council meeting, what the, what the weight of the agenda looks like, but it might be an appropriate time to, to invite Senator Pan and Assembly Member McCarty to come and give their overview of the session.
Sure, we can look at the agendas and see what, what makes sense.
Okay. All right, any other questions on the calendar? I'm sorry, on city manager report, city attorney reports. Any staff directions for members of the council? We have no future agenda item requests, so Mr. Joe Hannison moves and Mr. Ledesma, Mayor Protime Ledesma seconds. If the meeting be adjourned, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.